Meeting for Wednesday, May 19th, 2021. It is 7:01 and this is a virtual meeting. The meeting ID is 9251671532. If you're watching on TV and want to join us on Zoom, As I said, it's being simulcast live on Channel 79, NCTV. And with that, let's begin with the pledge of allegiance being led tonight by Girl Scout Troop 50568. Who do we have from 50568 tonight?
Hi, thank you for having us. I'm Tammy Deluson. I'm the troop leader for Troop 50568. And girls, do you want to introduce yourselves? We'll start with my daughter.
Hi.
What's your name?
Charlotte.
Hi, Charlotte.
Hi.
And who else?
Elizabeth, you're muted, sweetie.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth.
Hello, Charlotte. Hello, Elizabeth. Would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yeah, one more. Go ahead, Claire.
Oh, there she is. Say it again.
Hi, I'm Claire.
Okay. You don't have to mute.
All right.
Would you like us to all to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, please.
Okay. All rise. Face the flag. Steve Carl's little window there. We've got a flag. And you may begin.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic and to God, individuals with liberty, justice, and moral.
Okay, you may take your seats. Would you, would any of you like to tell us a little bit about your troop? And what you've been doing this season? Have you been going on camping trips? Or have you been earning badges?
Well, of course, I have someone blowing leaves right outside my window because isn't that the way life works? Yes, girls, what badges have we been working on? We've done our first aid badge. Can you guys think of another one we've worked on?
The baker's badge.
Baker's badge. Mechanical engineering. Yeah. What did we do for mechanical engineering? Go ahead, Claire.
Um, we did balloon cars.
Balloon cars. What else? Paddle boats? We've been having a good time. What grade are you guys in, Elizabeth and Claire?
Fourth.
Fourth.
And how many girls are in your troop?
Eleven.
Eleven? Do you need more? Or is eleven is the right size?
Eleven's a good number.
Good, good. I like to hear it.
And we've been meeting at the Mary B. Cabin outdoors and absolutely love that property. And the committee who runs it is fantastic. It's great property.
That's great to hear. And when is the beginning of the season? If anybody wants to join Troop 50568? Is that the beginning of the school year?
Yep.
All right.
Join anytime, but yeah, usually it's best to join late August and early September.
Great. Any camping trips planned?
We just had encampment, which is a four-hour camping at Kiwanis Park last Saturday, which was organized by the ninth graders and was fabulous.
Well, thank you very much, Claire. Thank you, Charlotte. Thank you, Elizabeth. And good night and have a great, have a great summer.
Good night. Have a great start.
So John, we need to now amend the agenda to add.
Yes, so unless anyone objects, we're going to amend the agenda in two ways. We're going to move the Housing Authority to be first. And we're going to add Ira Bloom in a discussion, which was noticed yesterday. We'll be immediately following the public comments. And we're going to approve a third set of minutes for May 4th. So if I hear no objections, that's what we'll do. Okay.
John, just real quick, John, real quick. I just heard from Mike Morrow. He's at the Police Commission meeting and he's, he'll join us in progress. But they, he said there's some items that he needed to hear. So he'll be, he'll be with us shortly.
Okay. So Rich Townsend, would you like to take the role?
Sure. Robin Bates-Mason.
There.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Liz Donovan. John Engel.
I'm here.
Liz, Liz, are you there?
I'm here, sorry.
Oh, there we go. John Engel.
Here.
Sven England.
Here.
Mark Jmski.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
We already heard about Mike Morrow. He will be here. Maria Naughton.
Here.
Christina Ross. I don't see Christina. Rich Townsend, here. Penny Young.
Here.
Okay, it appears that we've got 11, 11 people, John, with 10 with one joining in a few minutes. You have a quorum.
Excellent. So the meeting is called to order. With our first order of business is the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve of the minutes for the April 14th special meeting? The April 21st regular meeting? And the May 4th special meeting? I have a motion from Sven. Do I have a second from Steve? All in favor? Raise your hand. Sven, John, Steve, Rich, Maria, Penny, Mark, Tom, maybe Liz and Robin. Okay. It is unanimous. All three minutes are approved. Onto the next thing. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the town council on agenda topics scheduled for review and vote. Speakers are requested to provide their names. Street address and comments will be limited to two or three minutes, subject to the total number of speakers. Does anybody wish to address the council? There being none, we'll move right on to the Housing Authority. We have, we have to vote on an approval of a request from the Housing Authority for $300,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for gas conversion costs at Mill Apartments. And our special guest from the Housing Authority is Bernard Simkin. Would you like to tell us?
Hello, everyone.
Thank you.
Well, you know, we started the project already and you know, now we can get money out of the, to be allocated from the Affordable Housing Fund. It's actually a costly project. We finished about half of it already. The Mill Apartments, which is the most challenging because we need to replace furnaces. And now we're ready to go on to the next step. And that's also a challenge because supply chains are pretty tight on getting different supplies we need. So that's been delayed a little bit. We thought that would be easy since these people have propane and propane too. Natural gas is not a common conversion, we learned. So we're working on that and the funds will be very helpful. Any questions?
Are you doing any solar over there in that flat roof building?
It's all electric. We just about completed that. We're now going to do Phase 1 and Phase 2 of Millport, which are the apartment buildings. And they have propane power for their stoves and their furnaces. And we're trying to get the conversion kits to convert that over. And of course, we have to get the propane supplier to remove their meters and have air source come in and put theirs in. And that sometimes is a challenge in dealing with air source, but we've, we've got it pretty well taken care of.
Any questions for Bernie?
I have a quick question. I keep hearing about building prices and lumber and things going up a lot. Is that affecting the price of this building project or the costs?
It is. It is because it's hard to get these conversion kits and whoever has them is charging. No, I'm not. Can you hear me?
No, I can't.
Okay. I don't know how it compares to the cost of lumber, but some of the parts that we need for these GE stoves have become very hard to get. And anyone that may have it is asking for quite a bit more than normally, but they can't even get as many as we need. So it's been a hassle and it's going to take a little longer than we expected.
Thanks.
But as far as the furnaces for the Mill Apartments, they were purchased, you know, really at the start of the pandemic and they were stored for us. So that was a pretty good way of doing it.
But you're on budget for the whole project? The new, the, the new Kane and Parish project that's everybody's so excited about?
That's on, I think it's actually a little low budget and it's also ahead of time too. So we hope by this summer, we can start moving the people that were relocated, just a few people that is, and move everyone over to the new building and then get ready for the next one.
All right.
John, make a motion that we approve the request from the Housing Authority to spend $300,000 from the Housing Trust Fund for gas conversions at Millport.
Do I have a second? Mark? All in favor? I see Maria, John, Steve, Rich, Sven, Penny, Mark, Tom, Liz, Robin makes 10. So we've got 10 out of 10. There's nobody left to be zero, so the motion passes 10 to 0.
Thank you, folks. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bernie.
Okay.
Don't come back too soon. We're out of money.
Oh, I was hoping to come back next meeting. But I'll stick it, I'll stick in at this meeting and just listen to.
Well, you're in for a treat because next up we have the town attorney, Ira Bloom. And he's going to tell us about the, what everybody's buzzing about, which is the referendum. So with that, we voted Ira to, on, on June 2nd for, from noon to 8:00, two nights ago. We also got on Monday a letter from the Board of Ed as their attorney, through their attorney. So why don't you tell us what you know about this?
Good evening, members of the council. I'm Ira Bloom, Town Attorney. So I was asked to come and give you a little quick summary of my position on this. And you should have received, I think you did all receive, a letter that I wrote in response to the board attorney. Her name is Andrea Belik, that you received earlier. And then I responded. I think you all have a copy. I don't agree with her analysis and I think you have properly scheduled the referendum for, for a date certain, June 2nd. You know, my analysis is, is actually pretty straightforward and I can summarize it fairly simply. I'm going basically just by what the charter says. And I think it's, it's clear in the charter. The starting point is section C4-15. And that provides that each affirmative or negative legislative action taken by the town council, which relates to any appropriation or bond issues or to inordinates, is subject to a referendum. So you, you can almost stop right there. It says any, any action, positive or negative. So there was a negative, there, there was a proposal to reduce the budget. We know about that. $463,337. That did not pass, so that's a negative action. And that is the subject of the appeal. Petitions were, were taken out in a timely manner. They were returned in a timely manner. Town clerk has confirmed the signatures. And I think, you know, you could almost stop right there. Now, there are some side issues, which I, I addressed in my letter and I'll just summarize some of those quickly. This gets a little more complicated because in the original motion from the town council, Mr. Morrow, I think, made the motion. He, he linked the reduction of the $463,337 to a specific line or lines in the Board of Education budget, dealing with the school start times. That cannot be done. I think most of you know that you, as the town council and reviewing Board of Ed budget, you have a bottom line reduction power only. So you can't tell them to cut this line or that line. You can make a, a cut of the bottom line. So that, that motion really went beyond the authority under state law. But I felt that there was nevertheless a, a motion, which failed, to reduce the budget. So we crafted the, the referendum question so that it did conform properly to the state law. We made no reference to those lines or, or line dealing with school start times. But this did serve as a negative vote. Negative in the sense that it did not pass. And the charter allows a petition to be taken out and a referendum to be called under the right circumstances with the requisite signatures. And that's what occurred. And as I noted, we tailored the question to reflect the town council motion without the additional language. Without the additional language dealing with school start times. Few other quick points here and then I'm happy to answer any questions. It really has to be made crystal clear that as to what happens if, if there are more yes votes and no votes. In other words, if the town council action is reversed, effectively that means if, if the majority of those voting vote to cut the budget by the $463,000 and change amount. And what happens is it'll go back to the Board of Finance for reconsideration. That's also in the charter, that section C4-165A. Notably, it does not come back to this town council. It goes only to the Board of Finance under the charter for reconsideration. And so they will have to reconsider. Now, what does that mean? I suppose the plain dictionary language would mean they would have to reconsider whether they want to also cut $463,337,000 from the budget. If that should happen and that's the way they vote as part of their reconsideration, it's also important to note and understand that the Board of Education would then have a total budget reduced by that amount, $463,000 and change. And it would be entirely up to the Board of Education as to how they allocate that cut. There is no legal requirement under Connecticut law that they would have to apply that cut towards school start times or to anything else in particular. They could, they could allocate it to whatever they want in their sole discretion. So that's an important point that I think for the benefit of those who will participate in the referendum, they, they should understand that A, it goes back to the Board of Finance for reconsideration. And then if it goes to the next step, if the Board of Finance takes further action, the Board of Education will have sole discretion with regard to how that, how that is eventually allocated, how the cut is allocated. Attorney Abelik, she had a different view. You've probably read her letter. She basically felt that the petition should have been taken out with regard to the last two votes taken by the council, the vote to defeat, or the, the, the defeated vote, I should say, of $463,000. And then the vote to approve the entire Board of Ed budget, 92 million, thereabouts. I don't see it that way and I don't see any requirement in the charter that would require that. And I don't think that is the correct analysis. So I disagree with, with that basic point, but I do agree with her on the point that she stressed and I just tried to stress, A, that it goes back to the Board of Finance. And if ultimately a cut is made after the vote, after a positive yes vote to cut and then reconsideration by the Board of Finance to go with the cut, the Board of Ed has sole discretion as to what to do with that, with that cut. The, I've worked with Town Clerk Claudia Weber to try to come up with a, a good explanatory statement. That's authorized by state statutes. And as of this morning, I, I hope we concluded that and that statement will be issued. Interestingly, just for your benefit, statutes do say that it should be prepared by the town clerk, by the municipal clerk. Although it does say that, that it does have to be authorized by the legislative body. So it's kind of a combined process, the way I see it. And that's, that's what happened, I guess, also, or I think it happened on Monday. Last point I just want to make, just so, again, it's clear. The charter also provides that, my mill here, but it's in section four of the same section, C4-16. To prevail, the vote has to be a majority of those voting. It also has to be at least 15% of the total electors in the town to be effective. So that's from the charter also. So I think what you've done is proper. I could probably tell you that to have a referendum like this on a negative vote, I think, is a little bit unusual to find in a charter like this. But that's what it says. And you took a legislative action and it was not approved, so it's a negative vote. The charter allows for a referendum. And that's, that's my position on this. So we'll go forward.
Yeah, I'm mute, John.
Any questions for Ira? Thank you, Ira. Any questions for him? Go ahead, Tom.
So Ira, in the, the motion that Mike Morrow made, there are two things about it that puzzled me. One is it is the $463,000 amount, which basic, which clearly refers to a line item in the school budget. It's the only line item that would have that dollar amount. But moreover, he goes on to say that the reason for the motion is relates to school start times. So I think some of us are struggling with, how could this not have been a line item, a motion to, to affect a line item in the school budget? And how is it that it, it changed that analysis to sort of, how, how do we get comfortable with the fact that you, somebody reformed that statement of the issue i- in, in order to cast the question subject to referendum?
The simple answer is it's not allowed by state law. You, you cannot reduce the school board budget, a particular line item within the school board budget, period.
But why isn't the result of that analysis that the referendum is, is inappropriate? Because that's what it's all about.
That is, I guess, an interpretation. I didn't look at it that way and I thought I'd give the benefit of the doubt to those who wanted to petition for a cut of $463,337.
Just one more quick question. In, on page two of your opinion, you say that the Board of Finance would reconsider the total amount recommended for the Board of Education's budget appropriation. That one was new to me. So what is the question before the Board of Finance? Is it the, the half a million or is it the whole school budget or both?
It, it's, it's the $463,000. That's, that's, maybe that wasn't worded quite as clearly, but yeah, all, all they would have before them if the vote passes.
Okay.
The referendum is the $463,000 and change. They'd have to decide whether they want to revise their recommended budget to that extent, not, not beyond that.
Thank you.
I mean, look, it could happen that if that happens by the Board of Finance and I have no idea. I'm just, just speculating. The Board of Ed will consider whatever they want to consider. They'll look at the vote presumably and, and make their own decision. But it, but it can't be, it can't be forced on them to, to take out that amount, 463, out of a particular line.
Can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
I can.
I can hear you.
I can hear you.
I'm, I'm done for the moment if you're waiting for me.
I think it's in, you know, I think, Ira, it's interesting to me that every year, if the town council makes a motion to reduce the budget, we're asked to give a reason. And we give a reason every year. And two years ago, it was, we, we gave the reason for start times. We know that we don't have line item authority, but we're always asked to give a reason. 10 years ago, when I joined the council, Roger made a motion to reduce the budget for the purpose of, of, of reducing the, the cafeteria fund. More recently, when Bill Walbert was asked, why a $50,000? And it was the first, you know, round number. Why, why are you making a motion to reduce the budget by $50,000? He said, because, because it's a round number. My point is, we're asked every year. There's nothing unusual about Mike Morrow's motion, which is to give a reason for what the cut is for.
Yeah, you know, look, that, that makes good logic to me. You know, I was on the Westport Legislative Body, which is the representative town meeting for eight years. And, and I was on the Westport Board of Education for another eight years. So I, I've seen it on both sides. If, if someone just says, I want to reduce the Board of Ed budget by, you know, $500,000, they're going to say, and others are going to say, well, for what reason? I mean, give us some idea where you think, you know, there's, there's fat. And so I think it's helpful to identify where you, you would like it to come from, but it's only a wish. It can't be imposed. There are some people, I've seen it over my years, who just say, you know what? It's too high. And, you know, they can decide, but I think it should be cut by a million dollars and I don't care where, it's just too high. So there are two sides to that, but, but I think what you're doing is sensible as long as everybody knows that it's not binding, the particular reasons or the cuts. It's not binding on the Board of Education by state law.
Any other questions for Ira?
I have a question. The Board of Finance in the general regular budget season can add or subtract in, to a budget. But if this amount goes back to the Board of Finance, are we saying they can only, they can only accept? Can they add to it? What is their, what can they do if it goes back to the Board of Finance?
I think all they could do is decide whether the 463,337 should be removed or not, seems to me. Binary choice, I think.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, thank, Ira, thank you. Just, just so I'm clear, because I, I just want to go back to what Tom was saying. So is the referendum on the vote of the town council?
Yes, yes, to, to.
And so that, so that vote was based on language that includes Mike's, Mike's comments about start times. So what, I think what Tom and I are trying to understand, just so that we're not tripping over ourselves going forward, is we're essentially referending that language because that's what that vote was. And if the referendum's on the vote, then, then that's exactly what it's about.
Yeah, but, but it's not legal. So I, I advocated that it come out. That's what happened.
Okay, okay.
I didn't want to put up a town, a townwide referendum on something which was not legal.
Okay. And I, and then my follow-up question is, does that then create a problem? If, if, if the referendum does succeed going forward, does the Board of Ed, based on, on their lawyer's perspective, create an issue?
Well, they, they've identified different problems. I don't think they object to the fact that the, you know, the line for school starting times was deleted. They agree with that part, I think. But they, they raised different concerns that it, it was the wrong vote or it should have been two votes. So that's, and they also say after eight days, it expired the opportunity. So they have two or three different arguments that I don't agree with. I don't know what they will do. The letter, I guess, speaks for itself, but they do face legal problems. But, but it's not that, as I understand what you're saying, Mike, it's not that particular problem.
Right. And okay, so that, because our minutes actually acknowledge that language, I just want to make sure that we don't run into a, a legal issue going forward, given that it's documented in our minutes.
Well, it, it would have been surely a legal problem if the referendum would have been to delete one particular line, in my opinion. So we deleted that. And, and, and you know, again, to put this in, in some perspective, the explanatory statement, at least the last version I saw this morning, does set out the full, you know, it does indicate what the intent of, of your motion was, Mike. And, and so. does set out the full, you know, it does indicate what the intent of, of your motion was, Mike, and, and so that seemed fair. People will know from that statement, and I suppose from whatever the advocates of this say, but they will know from the town statement what generated that vote, and it was tied into the school starting point, line.
Great. Thank you.
Any further questions for Ira? Okay, going once, twice. All right. Thank you, Ira.
Okay, thank you all. Have a good evening. Thanks.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, next on our agenda is the First Selectman's update, but I don't think the First Selectman is here.
He's unable to make it at a last minute tonight, so we're just going to have to skip that one for the next, next go around.
Okay. Next, we have the Playhouse Theater Roof Project, and Tiger was with, oh, there he is. Are you in your car?
I am on a baseball field. Yes, my son is playing. We're losing by one. I'm not very happy.
And he just spent the last hour on the Police Commission meeting in his car.
All right, then let's be quick with this, so you can get, are you in the first inning or the ninth?
We're getting, we're getting close to the end of the game. It's, it's majors, they're, they're twelve-year-olds.
Do you want to, do you want us to put you at the end?
No, I'm good. Let's, we're here, let's go.
Okay, we have a request for a special appropriation in the amount of $61,700 to increase the Playhouse Roof Project appropriation to meet additional expenses for structural report for solar panels, environmental services, and roof consulting. The project budget will increase from $231,020 to $292,720. The source of funding is the Movie Theater Fund.
It's moved.
It is moved by Sven. Do I have a second? Christina, now we have a discussion. Any discussion, Tiger?
No.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Tiger, how much, how much of the money is being spent on, on the solar aspect of this, and, and is that something we've got in the plan today? Why isn't the whole solar thing in, in, included?
We, well, we, we had to, first, we analyzed whether or not the roof could handle it. And it's, it's right at the cusp as to what we, what type of installation we place, whether it's ballasted or mechanically attached to the roof. If it's ballasted, it's a little bit heavier, and we're, we're right at the, at the, kind of, at a decision point as far as factors, safety, what have you. So that, the report itself and the structural engineer costs us $6,300. At that point in time, then, we're determining whether or not we would own the system, or it would be a PPA. And right now, we're, we're going through, trying to determine if we have enough square footage at this location and others to be able to package it well for, for the bidders. If we don't, then we would bid it out as a town-owned array at that point, and, and have to do the analysis. So it's, it's, it's sort of, they need to be separate, but we are working towards it, and we, we don't have an answer yet as to whether or not town-owned or, or our purchase agreement. We are looking towards a PPA, but, but we might not have enough square footage to make it, you know, to make, make it so that it's a little bit palatable for some of the investors.
Do you have any idea how much the solar arrays would be if, if it was not a PPA? Just a range, not, not to hold you to it, but just
No, we, it was, it was, well, at a PPA, we're at three to four cents, but the, at a non-PBA, I don't know what, what, what the payback would be. We would have to then calculate how much of an array we can get on there, ballasted, unballasted, mechanically fastened, what have you, and then determine from the bid whether or not that, that payback would be sufficient. So we're, we're in the process of completing that analysis and determining that now.
Okay, thank you. I think it's a good idea, by the way, to have the solar arrays, et cetera. I'm not, I'm not being critical of them at all.
No, I, well, thank you. I, I agree as well. I think we're, we're trying to, whenever we fix a roof, we're trying to solarize it if we can, you know, and there's, there's, there's some significant area on this roof that we could, we could certainly power. And then it just comes down to whether we power the playhouse or we power the annex. We haven't determined what, which we'll do since we have the, the, the ability to do either.
Or both.
I'm sorry. Tiger, is the full $61,000 for consulting, or is some of that actual installation?
No, the, we had, the, the consulting fees ran us with, with the roof consultant, the environmental services, the structural analysis, that ran us to, I believe it was $30,278, about thirteen percent of the overall bid. Then we had the bid itself at 219 for the roof contract, 219,350. There was five separate bidders that, that bid that project. And then we added an alternate for, we had removed the existing roof railing and snow guards. We wanted to put up new roof railing and snow guards. That was 19,225. So overall, for the entire project of 290,000, you're talking 240,000 of it is for construction of the roof and the roof guards. And we have 23,000 for, 23,867 for contingency, and the remainder went to the roof consulting, the consulting fees for it. It was, like I said, it was about a thirteen percent cost on the consulting, and usually you want to stay between 10 and 15 percent. So we were kind of in that sweet spot.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah. Thank you.
John, I have a, it's Penny's question. Typically, what Kevin does is, does a very detailed report on everything that's going on with gas and CHP and solar and everything, and since he's not here, we will not have that report tonight. I would just say to anybody on the council, if there's any very, very pressing question, you've got Tiger right here. Otherwise, we'll have a more complete, you know, report at our next meeting.
I can give you a brief ever sources.
I didn't want, I didn't want to tie you up.
No, it's okay. I think the game's over. I don't know how it went, but I think it's over. The, I see the kids coming to the parking lot. The ever source is right now, working and installing the gas main up on Main Street from East Avenue to Locust, then they'll take a right and turn and go down Locust to Forest Street. That's the, one of the last mains that they have. And then they'll come to, they'll come to the Park Street, and then work through the Park Street lot, the Playhouse lot, to feed Upper Elm Street, on the, possibly the Playhouse, possibly the Annex, but definitely the Town Hall. So they're going to come in that route, because we don't have enough room. There's not enough space in the driveway. There's too much material in the driveway, plus it's all ledge. So it's a little bit better for them to come in the back. They can pick up all those businesses in the back and come to the front. Aquarium right now is working on Main Street. They are doing their tie-overs from the temporary line to the permanent line. The line was flushed and filled, fluorinated, pressurized, taken care of. Now they're just working their way through that. That point in time, they'll take a short pause and then start at the intersection of South and Cherry, come down Cherry to Main, hang a left onto Main Street, and head all the way to Locust Avenue. That's going to take up from June to probably September. It'll be predominantly at night. The Police Commission just approved the, the detour for some of the work that was necessary. And then, then at that point in time, they'll go to Upper Elm Street and put in a main on Upper Elm Street from Park Street to Grove Street. And that should take the month of September. I'm saying that outside, that they'll be done by November 1. They're telling me October 1. So that kind of gives you an idea of what's going to be happening in the downtown. Predominantly, all that work will be at night. So hopefully it won't affect the traffic patterns during the day, and, and you know, and it won't, that won't be that detrimental to some of the businesses at night, and we can tweak their hours if we need to. We just went out for, just awarded our paving bid for this year and our crack seal bid for this year. We'll be coming back for a microthran overlay and cape seal to the Board of Selectmen in two weeks. So that work is progressing. River Street is almost complete. The, the reconstruction of River Street, if you haven't seen it, I would suggest to go see it. The parking lot at Wavine is almost done. But if you haven't seen that, I'd suggest you go see that as well. We have basically landscaping left to do. There'll be about a half a dozen trees being planted throughout the area, try to soften it a little bit. Now, on that, there's, there's a lot at play. But I'm, any questions you have, just, you know, feel free.
Tiger, how, how's the, how's the Wavine construction progressing relative to the porches and getting the material?
It's, it's moving as fast as it can. I think Maria had asked a question about construction materials. We're having a problem getting the, the tile. It's coming from Ludovici, which was the exist, was the original tile manufacturer, coming out of Italy. Right now, they're talking at July 1. July 1, it'll hit our shores. So that's a problem. So that's going to delay us, and they're thinking they probably won't be out until September. They are progressing on the Western Ramp. Right now, they're building the walls for that, so that can, that can proceed. They're waiting on the materials for the fire escape, and then they're waiting on the materials for the door and the door hardware, as far as the openers. So it's, it has been delayed in a little bit of, a little frustrating at best. But they are moving forward. We haven't affected Wavine House operations too much. He's only had one wedding coming up. We have the prom there, and then, and then there's some weddings in the latter part of the summer that we'll have to work around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tiger.
No problem, Penny. You're welcome.
I have a question. Our next report's going to be Linda. She's going to give us a financial update, and he's going to tell us
I need a vote.
The what?
I need a vote.
Oh.
Sorry.
All right, all in favor. Yeah, we do have a motion and a second, so.
Sorry.
All in favor, raise your hand. Maria, John, Sven, Rich, Penny, Mark, Tom, Liz, Mike, Steve, Christina, Robin. So unanimous, 12, nothing. So you got your $61,700. I guess I want to know in a general sense, we're going to get the revenue side of the picture from Linda, but are you anticipating costs generally rising for your paving and your other major projects?
I've seen a slight uptick in in our paving costs. Some of the ancillary work, not so much, as far as the milling, things of that nature. Drainage installation, not yet, but paving cost has increased incrementally. The bids that I got last year were in the 92 range, now they're in the $98 range per ton. So there is a slight give there. The, the bigger problem that we're seeing is just material procurement.
It's not slight.
Well, no, but
Seven percent.
Except for the fact that at one point in time during oh, let's say 2014, 15, we were paying over 100. We were paying about 106, 108. So then it came back down again, and now we're, now it's working its way back out again, so. And the fact that the other items that are on those bids are low, they're working their way through that. So for example, this past paving bid, the, last year I had a $15 per square foot concrete sidewalk price, and I got a $12 per square foot concrete price. The drainage is a little bit lower. Milling, the milling is a little bit about the same. So overall, there wasn't much of an uptick between the two. But like I said, the material procurement is, is hurting, and it's going, that's going to cause us scheduling problems. It may cause us scheduling problems. Let's see, that's my main concern right now.
Okay, thank you. I guess, if there's nothing further for Tiger, you can go home, and we've got Linda next financial update. Are you ready, Linda?
I am, and this will be fairly, fairly brief. Revenues are trending as we anticipated. Sales tax revenues, we've already exceeded the 100% mark, so we're getting to that 99.5% collection rate. We're having good, good response to back tax collections as well. So our revenues are trending where we anticipate them to be. Our conveyance fees are, are high. Right now, we're at one, we're at 2.1 million in conveyance fees with a budget of a million. So we've more than doubled what the budget was last year. We, and last year this time, we were at 800,000 in conveyance fees. So obviously, that real, real estate market, we're seeing that in, in conveyance fees.
Could you repeat that part? It was what in his?
Sure. So right now, year-to-date as of April, total conveyance fees are 2.1 million. The budget for conveyance fees for the year was a million, so we've doubled. This time last year in conveyance fees, we were at 860,000. And so what's happening with the property tax and the conveyance fees, as you know, we're not generating parking revenue. And so it is making up for that shortfall in parking revenues. So all in all, our budgeted revenues, combined all revenue sources, is going to exceed budget, which is typical to, to what we see in Ucanen. On the expenditure side, we're trending where we anticipate we would. We are at 78% of total spend with two months remaining. And so we anticipate that we will come in under about 96, 97% of budget, and we will collect more on, on the revenue. You'll recall that with the special appropriations we did for the Board of Ed, we were, on the budget side, we were budgeting to draw down $6 million this year. But based on the revenue trends and the expenditure trends, we are not going to draw down $6 million in the fund balance. We'll probably be closer to a million and a half, worst-case scenario, drawdown. And this does not count any of the federal funds that are coming, because we didn't budget for those conservatively. And therefore, should we get any of those revenues this fiscal year, that will be an addition to what we budgeted. And if we get them next fiscal year, that would also be an addition, because we did not budget for those revenues either. So all in all, financially, we're, we're looking well, and there's no concern there.
This is a conveyance fees are not going to indicate, they're, they're going to just indicate that houses are, are moving from one to another. What I'd like to know is whether we're getting we're getting, building permit revenues. Are building permit revenues rising? Because that would be an indicator that houses are, are going up and are being improved, and we, that could have an impact on our budget. That could have an impact on the number of people in the schools. Do we have any leading indicators from building permit revenues, whether they're trending up?
They're doing better than last year. So this period last year, we were at just over half a million in building permit revenue. This year, for the same period, we're at 800,000 in permit revenue, building permit revenue. The budget was 830,000, and so we are at 97% of budgeted for building permits. So it's not exceeding budgets, but it's going to meet budget. Whereas last year, we did not meet budget, and so we are seeing an uptick compared to last year in building activity.
Are we providing, are, are we providing more services, or are any of the services we're providing getting much more expensive this year as a result of COVID, or for any other reason? I can think of some of the things, like parks and rec, you know, are being more heavily used, or differently used. I mean, are there anything that jumps out in the budget that is you know, that, that we should be watching?
Well, we've been tracking COVID expenses separately, just to be able to get reimbursement, and year-to-date, of course, with, you know, the, last year this time, we were at about 80,000 in COVID expenses, because COVID had just hit. This year, year-to-date in COVID, we are at a little over 400,000 in COVID-related expenses. So these includes, you know, PPEs and overtime initially from our EMS elections, overtime related to COVID, and all of those overtime-related expenses, the additional cleaning that we're doing. We were doing in Town Hall. We're beginning to scale that back now. But so far, we're at about 400,000 in COVID expenses, whereas this period last year, we were at 80,000. Now, all of these will be reimbursed. Majority of these expenses will be reimbursed, and so we'll see revenues offsetting those expenses once we start getting those in.
I guess I'm wondering about the non-COVID expenses, but, but nevertheless, these are expenses that are rising that we're not going to get reimbursed for, but have risen and are going to continue to rise as a result of COVID, such as our, we're going to spend more money on our trails. We're going to spend more money on our parks than we used to. We're getting less money from parking, which we've already talked about. I just wonder if any of these behaviors are changing, such that the mix of services are changing, or the cost of these services is changing?
Not dramatically. A lot of the expenses you mentioned in parks are capital-related. And our, and our capital budget is, hasn't really been shaped by COVID. It's just basically doing the things that we said we hasn't really been shaped by COVID. It's just basically doing the things that we said we would do based on the schedule. And maybe Tiger can speak more for his guys if they're seeing that. But in in the other departments, we're not seeing some dramatic increases in expenses directly as a result of COVID on the town side. I know the Board of Ed is a different story. They are seeing those.
Anyone else? I guess, you know, I mean, I'm searching for for things that are changing. For instance, Mike Morrow was very interested a year or so ago, as was I, on the changing traffic patterns based on the fact that people were leaving the highway and they were going through network, you know, our our neighborhoods and we were having to get police to monitor, you know, changing traffic patterns. And now that seems to have gone away, right? With traffic, you know, changing behaviors, you know, so I'm just trying to I'm racking my brain for what other changing behaviors are we seeing? I know that Aaron Lethlin yesterday with the Land Trust talked about the need to restore a great many of the trails. And I know that's an that's an expense. That's not a capital expense. So if the Land Trust is trying to restore trails because of overuse, that's why I say maybe our parks are as well. Although those are generally capital budgets picked up by the way of any conservancy. I just wonder if there's or expenses that we haven't been talking about yet that we're going to see. So I say some of this to maybe stimulate, you know, other questions, you know, what are we, what are we, what are we thinking about? What I hear you saying is that we thought we would draw down the the reserve six million and we're only going to draw it down by one. So we're going to have a windfall of at least five million dollars.
Yes, and that was the thinking with the Board of Finance when they budgeted for a five point six million dollar drawdown this coming year was to kind of give back some of that built up in the reserves by providing some additional relief on the mill rate and on the taxation amount. So this year's, the FY twenty two budget does have a higher drawdown of the fund balance than historical.
So the mill rate was supposed to be level. Does this mean it has the the potential to go down if the Board of Finance or are they done?
They're done. They're done for this for next fiscal year.
And it's flat.
It's flat.
All right. Okay, so we have the potential of drawing of going down next year. Okay.
John, are you implying that if we have excess capital, we should be investing in our fixed assets? Now versus later?
No, I I I don't think we know enough yet. I know we have a police station that we have no idea what it's going to cost us. I think that we're probably often lie to ourselves about what the real cost of Wavine restoring Wavine is going to be. I mean, so yeah, we've got a lot, we've got a lot of needs and you know me though, I like to see that mill rate go down even a little bit because I I think that the mill rate, you know, is an indicator. You know, a fiscal fiscal responsibility. You and I have debated on whether the mill rate is an accurate indicator, but no, so the mill rate is just one thing, one, one of several priorities we have. Okay, nothing else. Then I guess Linda. Thank you, Linda. Excellent report. I'm glad you're helming the ship. You've got a command of the numbers. Great. I think Liz is clapping, so.
He's not yet. He's got to do a roof.
Yep, New Canaan High School roof. Do we need, we don't need to read all of that, just the
Just the paragraph.
Just the beginning. Would you like, who would like to read that? Who wants to do the roof?
Rich should read it as.
Okay, go ahead, Rich.
Okay. Resolution authorizing appropriation of four million dollars for the school's two thousand twenty one project and financing of set appropriations by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in in an amount not to exceed four four million dollars. I guess I should have read the the beginning as well. New Canaan High School roof. Right? That's what this resolution is for.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, Rich has made a motion. Do I have a second? Mike? Any discussion on the roof? I guess I was wondering, Linda, there was some talk about who about whether the schools are managing the roof projects or is Tiger in the town or is there a collaboration? How did that end?
No, I believe the discussion was the collaboration on on the combined heat and out combined heat and power projects.
Okay.
And seeing some synergies there, but I believe things like the roof construction were always going to be managed by the Board of Ed.
Board of Selectmen, Dr. Keating did give a presentation yesterday, the Board of Selectmen with awarding the contract to Greenwood Industries noting that they accelerated the schedule of it. They were going to break it out over two years, but they've decided to do it in one year. And it's going to start the day school gets out and they hope to be done by mid-August, weather dependent.
That's this four million dollars?
Yes.
Oh, so they've got the contract there. It's already ready to go?
Yes.
Just waiting on us?
Yes.
Okay, well, we don't want to stand in the way of that. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? I mean, if you want to stand in the way of that, you know, now would be the time.
John, I've got a, I got a question for Linda. Linda, I know there was discussion over over how solar ready the roof was going to be repaired to be or whether this would accelerate. There were several issues around that. How did that turn out?
I believe that is still being that is still being reviewed. Mark, Mark Robbins, our consultant with the solar project is working with with Dan Clark and Dr. Keating on on how there was an issue of the footprint, how much of the footprint can the panels take and so forth, but those worked on.
Do you have any, do you have any idea about what percentage of the roof will be dedicated to this in in any, you know, any approximate manner? I mean, the high school roof has to be the biggest roof in town, you know? I mean, if there's a place to put solar, it's on the high school roof.
No, I do not know how what percentage of the roof would would get solar.
Thank you.
Do you know if there's a power purchase agreement anticipated or are we going to own the equipment?
That's one of the analysis that Mark is working on, which of the two is is the option forward.
Okay.
And John, I should clarify that yesterday's vote by the Board of Selectmen was subject to the Town Council approval tonight.
I was gonna, I wanted to ask about that, but I wasn't gonna.
For the record, it is in the motion and the minutes that it was subject to approval tonight.
Okay, well, I'm very happy to hear that they have a contractor who's ready to go and and do the whole thing. It sounds, sounds like a more efficient path. So we've discussed this roof in the past, so this is not a surprise to any of us. So we have a motion. If there's nothing further, all in favor, raise your hand. So I have John Sven Rich, Maria Penny Mark, Tom Liz, Robin, Christina, Steve, Mike. That's twelve votes in favor, passes unanimously. The high school roof passes. That brings us to committee reports, updates from committees, bylaws and ordinances, Mark and Steve.
So we've been, we've been working on the referendum pretty much for the last week to ten days. And as you heard tonight, that's going through and we actually heard today about the location. So it was confirmed the will be at the auxiliary gym at the high school on June second, starting at noon. So spread the word. Get out and vote. So that's part of the bylaws and ordinances, and that's really all we have at the moment. But since Mark and I have a little airtime here, we figured we this would be a good time to fill you in on the library. What's going on there?
How do we get all these? We get all the great.
All the good stuff.
Yes, we, we definitely, we definitely have some good stuff. So, so the library, the next meeting will be planning and zoning on the twenty fifth, but there we've had a little, a little work group working together, you know, at the request of of P and Z to try to get together the different groups and between the Preservation Alliance and the town and the library. So there's been a working group. Kathleen Corbett's done a nice job trying to coalesce and put a report together of what that little group bound. So she's going to present that, she'll get that to the town, the the Planning and Zoning Commission. And you know, I wish I could report there. It was you know, we have a great solution to this issue, but we don't have any further things to report. So it's basically where it stands. You know, I don't know, Penny, you you had you had some information at that as well. I don't know whether you want to report on anything, but it's it's at this point, I think both the preservationists and the nineteen thirteen folks as well as the as well as the library really haven't changed any any of their positions on the nineteen thirteen building. So that's where it is at the moment. Planning and zoning will be studying it and I'm sure they're going to be taking another couple of weeks to get get through it. So.
But don't they have a deadline by which they have to rule?
Yes, yeah, the twenty fifth is the last meeting where they'll take any input from either side. And then they'll go into deliberations or they could make a decision on the twenty fifth, but it doesn't look as though they're going to do that. I think they're going to go into deliberations. It'll be a couple of weeks. They may have a special meeting a couple of weeks after that to announce their findings or whatever. And because I don't think they want to wait an entire month to their next meeting. So I believe you know, from where, from what I understand is they'll try to, you know, wrap it up on the twenty fifth and then a couple of weeks later get together again.
Steve, don't they have ninety days from the time they close it to?
They do have ninety days, but but because of the pending construction and all the things that the library have talked about about escalations and costs and everything there. I think they want to bring this to a resolution so that the library can get a shovel on the ground and get moving. So that's really the, that's really where they are. I know the Board of Finance had the library in at their last meeting and the the library was able to present and give them an update. So I'm sure the library is happy to come and, you know, Lisa would be happy to give us an update as well. If at our next meeting, if you want, as far as the project goes and as far as where they are. So you know, she's mentioned that she'd she'd love to come.
So essentially, so essentially, Steve, it is in planning and zoning's hands.
And has been, Penny.
And, and no, I know, but I I think everybody just needs to know that we're the finances out, we're out. It is in planning and zoning's hands solely.
That's correct. You know, and I think those of us who have gone through these issue, big issues before, you basically have to sit on your hands. It's been difficult because, you know, you want to, you want to pick up the phone and you want to call members of the Planning and Zoning Commission and lobby, but that isn't possible. I mean, they they're basically to be sequestered on this and there, you know, there's nothing we any of us can do now. It's literally in their hands. So that's been the hardest thing, not trying to weigh in on things. So it's, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty difficult to sit on your hands, but that's what we're doing.
I think, Steve, the the comments that are, you know, that are coming out from the working group is that it was an opportunity for the library side and the preservation side to actually you know, be looking at one another face to face and and articulate their concerns, their positions, the rationale for their positions and that hadn't happened before. And so you know, it's on the table.
It was, it was incredibly cordial on both sides. I was, you know, I was impressed, you know, what you, what you read in the press is two opposite sides just going at it with each other. But when when they were in the room together, it was amazingly cordial. So and we found that over over time. I mean, I know Sven and I have met with the groups as well, sort of have a cup of coffee with them type of thing. And when they get together, they're, they are very nice to each other and, you know, they're trying to get to some common ground. But this is a tough one. I mean, this is, you know, we've talked about it ad nauseam at this at our meetings here. It's just, it's a very difficult one. And, you know, at some point in time, we've got to make a decision as a town and move this forward. So I'm hopeful that, you know, planning and zoning will make a decision and, you know, and we'll we'll stick by it and we'll get going.
Have they signed the MOU?
Yeah, that was going to be my question, the MOU.
Yeah, the Board of Finance is, you know, they're, they're waiting for, as Todd said a long time ago, they're waiting for the big three. They need the MOU. They need the the cost estimates from the library and and they, you know, they need the approval from P and Z. That's the big three. And hopefully we'll we'll be getting that shortly. And obviously the MOU has to come back through us again as the final vote. So we will have the final vote on that MOU. And once that vote's taken, then it's basically, that's it. I mean, that will, that will start the clock ticking in terms of allowing the construction and making this go forward. So.
I I just would stress Steve's point about costs. I mean, they're, the library is battling a timeline and they've already locked in certain materials and hedged themselves on 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 the escalation of costs. So you know, I think you know, I think time is of the essence for sure from their standpoint. And of course, as Steve pointed out, it is in P and Z's hands and to the extent that they hold a special meeting or approve it within a month or ninety days. It's certainly critical. I, yeah, I mean, that's the only other information I would pass from our meetings with the Building Committee.
Yeah, when we're on those Building Committee calls and Mark and I, they're, they're at least ninety minutes every Friday morning. We have another one tomorrow morning at eight. The the steel contracts and and things that they talk about, I mean, they have a contract where the this, the formation of the steel for the building is actually going hard on the thirty first of May and they may be able to get one more extension. But they've locked in pricing on steel. So if this, if this doesn't happen, I mean, some of the things that they've done to try to mitigate escalations in cost are going to go out the window, which is, it's kind of scary that we're this close and you know, knowing and Mark and I attend those meetings and seeing what they struggle with. You know, with the what ifs, it's, it's, it's a big project to say the least, with a lot at stake. So. Anyway, well, we have another meeting tomorrow morning. So the next time we meet, we'll have more information and we're happy to pass along or you know, if you want to, you can reach out to either Mark and I. We're happy to fill you in as well.
I have, I have, I have a question on on the advice the library is getting. I'm aware of a project that is that is being discussed in California and they are, they are being told to hold for a year because the the escalation of prices is really just kind of off the charts. Almost in a panicky frenzy kind of, you know, standpoint and they were told to to hold and let things quiet down. So I didn't know whether or not, you know, the library is getting any similar kind of advice.
Yeah, Penny, the one thing I can say is that they are still within their budget. And but assuming there isn't a significant delay, because as as Steve points out, there there are escalators that will eventually kick in after if if they don't receive materials, right? So.
Good.
There is.
And one of, one of the things that's interesting, listening to them, they're, they're dealing with not only leaky roofs, you've all heard that, you've heard creaky, leaky, squeaky, you know, for a while now, but they're, they're dealing with something right now that was interesting. They have a water, a hot water heater that absolutely just blew up. So they don't have hot water. And they had to make a decision of whether to buy and install a brand new expensive hot water heater or go with one of those little tiny electric ones to make sure that, you know, you can have sanitizer sanitizerize your hands. So they don't want to put a lot of money into this building. And if they're, if you're saying like hold off for another year, the amount of money that the town and the library would have to spend to to just make that building livable for another year.
No, I know.
Or are we dumping money into a building and then knocking it down? I mean, it just really doesn't make any sense.
And Steve and I have asked, have asked for for those numbers. Essentially, can you, you know, pro forma the the amount of money that would need to be spent, which we could all infer that it would be town money if if it, if it didn't go through, you know, what the cost would be. And I mean, we know what their operating budget is each year to 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 main just maintain the building as Steve points out. So it's almost there's a whole nother escalation that would ensue. So. That's I don't, we don't, we don't have a specific number if if anyone is asking us for that.
And you said the thirty first of this month is when some of those contracts.
The steel and the steel in particular, Maria, is the thirty first. And, you know, they, they, they think they can get an, you know, a one more extension. They've gotten one extension already, but you you just can't keep extending these contracts because they've got. Cause they've got, they've got a, an assembly line that this, they've committed to the steel already and they've got to start fabricating it. So they, what they, what they would have to decide is they would actually have to fabricate the steel. And if they don't go through the project, they would have to sell the steel back, melt it down and get like 40 cents on the dollar, which, you know, it's, it's a big number. So, um, if it doesn't go through, so.
Yeah. And it's, and, and, and that conversation, those types of conversations are occurring because of, the, 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 the current situation. And essentially how much can we get back for the amount that we're paying for the steel, which is, Steve pointed out, a, a difficult situation to be in right now.
And I, I hate, I hate attending stressful meetings, but the last couple of weeks within those library building meeting, it's a stressful meeting for 90 minutes. They're, they're, they are, they're under the gun. So I can, you know, Mark and I could sense it and, uh, watching it is, is not easy.
Okay. Next committee, education. Tom, Maria.
I'll just point out that, looking at the calendar, that the referendum is scheduled to happen on June 2nd and the next Board of Education meeting isn't until, uh, the 7th.
But we just had one two nights ago. So for those of us who weren't there on the 17th, what happened on the 17th?
So that there's a review, a, a sort of a reviewing what had been done in the past and why. And so it was a, it was a, uh, fairly thorough presentation of, uh, what questions they had, they had asked for in, in the past, what issues there were and board members had a chance to say, well, should we rethink that? And does this still make sense? But it's, um, they didn't, uh, there were no proposals on the table for change or status quo. Just, it was informational mostly. Uh, I, one could expect that at the next meeting, they might get more specific and possibly reaffirm their, the plan. But that's not set in stone. It, it's, it's a work in progress because they have, leaving aside the referendum, they have time because it looks like, uh, uh, it's not practical to order school buses and have them operational until like April of next year anyway. So, you know, why not, why not take the time to get it right?
Anything, anything else? I think the, the great controversy is, um, between a three tier system and a two tier system, right? Is that still what the, 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 or are they talking about different flavors of a three tier system?
Well, you're, you're probably right that two tier is most visible as, as, as an option that people are talking about. But, um, I think it's more that the analysis of three tier, of two tier is, is probably more intense and urgent on the, on the part of the proponents of the referendum than, than on the school budget. It's good, but the school board I, I perceive is, you know, that they want to review and make sure they got it right. But I don't think they're sitting there debating, it's this one in an active sense, is this one better than the other? It's, it's more just, let's just be sure that we got it right. So if there's speculation, this is just speculation that if you had to read the cards, you, you'd think that probably they were headed toward reaffirming the three tier. But we don't know that, uh, it, it, and it's very much up to the board. There's a lot of references in the, in the back and forth about Dr. Lutz's plan, this and Dr. Lutz's plan that. But, uh, right now he is really absolutely coming back to the board and say, I need you guys to decide what we're going to do next.
I, I think some new ideas came out, um, where, you know, they, they seem to be trying to find five minutes, five minutes, you know? And, um, one idea was that, you know, all the schools were dismissing at the same time, right in the center of town. Maybe they could change that. I think some more, um, conversations are going to happen with Roy Walder. So I, I mean, I think everyone's trying to find a solution, but it still seems like the two tier one that costs a little bit more money would make everyone, would make the other, the side that, you know, is, is calling for a referendum happy. So.
Yeah, I would agree. That's true of the proponents of the referendum, but there are a lot of people in town that have different opinions. They're just happen not to be vocal on it. So for every, for every change you make in the schedule, there's somebody that's going to be unhappy. And, and so for the recent past, we've talked about the unhappiness of the proponents for the referendum. But there are other constituencies. If you went to three tier, there would be a lot of, um, two tier, there'd be a lot of people unhappy with that too. It's just change is difficult. This is an easy, not an easy, uh, process.
And since I was listening in, uh, John, and you asked, they, they, they also talked about the tra, the traffic problems. And Roy talked about, you know, a two tier system would have roughly 15 to 16 additional drivers. And right now it's almost impossible to find drivers of buses. So if you know anyone looking for work, that might not be a bad place to start.
Okay. You know, I, I have to point out, um, you know, we're, we're in a difficult position because on the one hand, a referendum is, you know, basically turning over our vote. On the other hand, um, we are the voice of the people. And when a thousand people sign, sign up for a referendum and ask for a referendum. You know, I know I've been, I've had several people say, well, you know, it's a, it's such a, it's so wasteful. And, you know, it's, it's horrible that we have to go through this. But I have to say, part of me says that anytime a thousand people feel strongly about something, be it a library or start times or anything, uh, and can get organized for a referendum. I, and part of me celebrates that, you know, I think that's democracy at work. It's the last way that citizens have to express how they feel. And so I can't get upset that there's a referendum challenging our decision. You know, maybe we got it wrong and they're going to let us know that we got it wrong. You know, I, I can't get upset about that. So, um, you know, I'm not picking sides on the referendum. Uh, but part of me says that, um, I guess democracy is in fact working when, when a thousand people can sign a piece of paper and demand, you know, that we, um, pick a point in time and vote on an issue. I don't think we should be voting on every issue, like some towns, every budget is referendum in some towns. Um, but, uh, it doesn't happen often, but when it does, it shows me that democracy is working here. So.
I agree democracy is better.
I agree a hundred percent with it. Very impressed that, that the effort, uh, has occurred. I will point out though, that, um, if the same effort had occurred on a, on a different question, if it were two years ago and you went around in town and said, does anybody want to change school schedules? You probably could have easily got a thousand votes then. So I, I think that there's something inherently unpopular about major change. So wh- while I admire them for rallying the troops, I, I'm not sure that there are any, there's anything new under the sun with the fact that people are unhappy with change.
Yeah. And I would, I would just add that just be, you know, even if the referendum passes, the Board of Ed doesn't have to cut the start times and you're essentially just putting a cut to the Board of Ed and, and leaving it to their discretion, which is, as Ira pointed out, so, you know, everyone needs to understand that too.
It's 0.5% of the budget. If any $92 million business can't find 0.5%, there's something wrong.
That's very true. Agreed.
I think it's, I totally agree. It's democracy in action and people have the right. The process is there for a reason. And I think, um, you know, I support the fact that the process is here and people are going for it. So we'll see what happens, but a thousand people who aren't happy, um, that's a lot. So.
Elections are won on less than that though. So that's another point to be made.
Okay. So up next, finance and government, Mark and Rich.
Mark, can I stop off for just a second here?
Yeah, that's all you.
The only report I would give is we've all spent a lot of time on the financial aspect of the town for the last six months. And the budget process is effectively over with the, uh, with the Board of Finance voting on the mill rate, which was slightly down in the, in the, in the fractional amount down. But it was not, and they talked about this, it actually was not flat. They talked about making it flat and they just decided not to do that. They wanted it to go down a little bit. And I think that's great relative to what our, our competitors are doing. Darian's mill rate's going up. Now they're below us, but it's going up. So they haven't been able to manage the town as well as our financial people have been able to manage the town. I think that's terrific. I also think it was a fa- fairly smooth cycle, uh, outside of a couple of big issues that we're, that we're talking about right now. But they're very substantial issues that have less to do with finance and quite frankly, more to do with, with how we're going to educate our kids and how we're gonna, how we're gonna manage the town. Uh, and I think that, uh, what John pointed out earlier is likely to be true. I think we're likely to see the next year that we will continue to benefit financially, uh, in New Canaan with how, how much will come in, uh, from reimbursements from the governments that, you know, either state and federal. It seemed to have more money than they know what to do with. Uh, and I think some of it will come to us and that's not being counted on right now. Uh, and so I think it's been a very good, uh, very good budget cycle. The one thing I would point out is I expected that this meeting, we would be, uh, we would be approving all of the bond resolutions uh, that went with the, the bonded capital and we only approved two. Uh, and I believe next meeting, we're going to be approving the rest of them. And I would say that the, the Board of Finance, for those of you that didn't, uh, didn't attend the meeting, uh, they, they, I think took a very, uh, a very good stance on, on deferring, uh, uh, approving any money, any substantial money for the police station, because we just aren't far enough to do that yet. And I think that was a, that was a very responsible decision to do that. So I think everybody ought to take a rest from, from finance and talk about education or something. And so.
And you are correct. We will be hearing all the rest of the bond resolutions, uh, the town council will approve at the June meeting.
Any surprises?
It was more just about noticing, you know, you try to get, you gotta get the two weeks and all of that. So it's just a timeline that we have to follow.
Got it. Health and Human Services, Liz and Penny?
Um, yeah, a quick report from the meeting earlier this month. Um, as of that meeting in the beginning of May, they were just, they were just about to give their 10,000th dose of COVID vaccine in New Canaan. So that was a big deal for them. Jen is, uh, our health director's, you know, the COVID stuff is pretty stable now, but she's with all the real estate sales and everything else and things coming back. She's very busy with inspections and pools and public pools and septic tanks and everything else. Um, she also mentioned that ticks are up. So if anybody has a tick and the, and, you know, they want to get it checked out, you bring it to Vine Cottage, uh, and the health department will, uh, take it for you and send it off to get it, uh, examined. So in case, uh, that, that is something that this is going to be an increasing, uh, as we get further into the good weather. Um, let's see. Uh, oh, one thing that did happen that was sort of interesting, um, they had to increase security at the building. The health, the, where Health and Human Services is located, they had an incident. I guess it must've been in April where, um, there was someone who tried to get into the building and, um, I think it was during working hours and, and, you know, caused some consternation. So they have increased the security. They've got a camera. Um, they've got a keypad now. The door is locked, so they have changed things there a little bit. So just FYI, I don't have any more detail than that. Maybe Penny. Penny, do you know any more about that?
No, I know. No, that was about it.
Okay. Okay. That was it. And then, um, the one other thing is just a final note, talking about, oh, well, affordable housing and that there, uh, there's basically, no, Canaan Parish isn't even taking anybody on the waiting list right now. Housing in town is, is no surprise, is really tight and affordable housing is, is, um, not, you can't get it right now in town, even Norwalk and Stanford, things are tight. So that's, you know, been causing a little bit of difficulty for, um, Health and Human Services. Um, they did mention, we're talking about Canaan Parish. One of the good things about that new redevelopment is that they actually will have a communal space, which I think the old Canaan Parish did not. And they're hoping to be able to use that for things like after school programs and potentially even senior programs. So that's, that's something we didn't have before that will be available for that community now. And that's it.
I just wanted to add Liz, that I was talking today with Tracy Carl, some of you know her. She said, this was around 3:30, they had vaccinated today over 1,100 people, just today, just by mid afternoon.
Well, yeah, and again, these numbers were before they opened it up to the kids. So yeah, that's great.
Amazing.
Yeah, I was over there. It was, it was crazy because every one kid that comes in has to have a parent. So it's two bodies for every vaccine. And so the, whoever got vaccinated was only allowed to sit in the chairs. Parents, mom, dad, or anybody else had to stand for the 15 minute period, watch period. So there's a lot of people around, a lot of bodies.
Hey Liz, has Jen been able to take a break since COVID started?
What's that?
Has, has Jen been able to take a break since COVID started?
No, no, I, I don't think so. Penny, you get the sense that it's, it's, I get the sense it's a little better.
A little, a little tiny bit better, but it's 24/7, 365, as I said.
Right. So even though COVID has improved with the real estate market booming and all the inspections going on and restaurants coming back. And yeah, she's still running flat out.
Yeah. The good news is she's not having to do the Saturday testing, um, anymore. So her weekends at least have been somewhat freed up. She was here, you know, 6:00 AM on Saturday mornings. Um, so she's at least getting a little bit of a breather that way, but.
Next we have, uh, infrastructure, uh, Penny and Christina.
I have nothing more than what Tiger shared with all of you.
Okay. Land, Christina, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good. I don't have anything to add.
Uh, land use and recreation, Robin and Maria.
Um, the Waveney Conservancy, uh, they presented to Parks and Rec, the same, uh, presentation they sent us last month. Uh, there are trees going into Waveney as well as, uh, sign changed at Kiwanis. Uh, Leo Carl presented to the Conservation Commission about EV chargers in town. Uh, received support from the Conservation Commission. Uh, I guess Connecticut, uh, New Canaan ranks fourth per capita in EV ownership, but we only have one EV charger in town. I think Darian has 18, Westport has 30. So that was discussed, um, looking at EV chargers possibly in the parks or even at the schools. The Conservation Commission voted to give a grant of $2,600 to New Canaan High School Science, uh, for water program. The food scrap program reached 1,100 pounds, I guess, two weeks ago. It was discussed, the, what Tiger said tonight, the solar panels on the playhouse. And then also, uh, the Bristow is looking, uh, the capital plan of 112,000. Uh, they thought that was going to come to town council tonight, but I guess that'll be next month that we'll vote on that. And then, um, uh, Commissioner, uh, Schiffer said that the Friends of Bristow have contributed 95,000 to date, uh, to the Bristow, uh, park or project, uh, currently. And that's about it.
And I can just, can get a little more up to date. Uh, Board of Selectmen yesterday approved EV chargers, an additional EV charger at Morse Court, as well as one on the annex, uh, with existing funds that were already budgeted for this. So.
That, that was the 10,000 already budgeted, right?
Exactly.
Yep. Thank you.
And we're up to Liz and Mike, public safety.
Uh, fire is pretty quiet. Um, police has a few things going on. Um, today they had a presentation on new libraries. Raised sidewalk, uh, proposal over on Maple Street. So they made that presentation today. In addition, um, there's that plan for, um, to modify Elm Street, to do some bump outs for pedestrian safety and hopefully gain some more parking spots that have been lost.
I heard that wasn't going well, the bump outs.
It was passed.
It was passed.
Two to one.
Right.
So the bump outs are happening.
That's correct. Yes.
Oh, okay. That was a rumor started before you got, joined our meeting, that it wasn't going well.
Yeah, no, yeah. As, as Tucker said, it passed. Commissioner McLaughlin had some. Yeah, no, yeah, as, as Tucker said, it passed. Commissioner McLaughlin had some three points that he made, that he wanted considered. But that was voted down. So it, it passed, so it's moving forward. Um, the Police Building Committee, the Police Committee did a walkthrough of Darien Police Department uh, recently. And then I think Greenwich is up next. So they're continuing to do their fact finding uh, investigation. Uh, interestingly, uh, there was a proposal uh, for Netflix, uh, is filming a movie in town. So they requested some, some street closures um, at the end of June. So that was passed as well. It's a Christmas movie that's filming. Um, I think there you're going to shut down. Winding Down Road and.
Widen Down, but that's just for a private, that's in May.
Oh, that's the May one and June is the.
In front of Town Hall overnight, June twenty seventh into Monday morning.
Right, okay. Uh, and then the animal shelter, uh, at least has been proposed and will be brought forward for approval. Uh, for, uh, with the select in, in uh, short, in short order. And that's the report.
John, if I may, just, you all know that the Memorial, Memorial Day Parade is happening, okay? And you all are invited to march, okay?
What else do we need to know about that? The route changed.
It may change again. Um, Eversaurus didn't um, take Tiger's recommendation and start at Locust. And come up to Town Hall. They've started in front of Town Hall. So it's, if you go by there right this very minute, it's, it's all torn up again. He's hoping they'll be out of there. They don't have a great reputation of putting in um, uh, patches when, when they need to. So we may have to reroute again, going across uh, by the Congregational Church and down that way over to Cherry Street. Left on Cherry and right on South Avenue, but um, we'll know more in the next few days.
Oh, Lord.
It's not the marchers that need to know, it's all the people who want to watch need to know. The marchers will just follow the person in front of them.
Don't you remember that scene in Animal House where they tried to reroute the parade? It didn't go well. They all marched into a brick wall. Anyway, okay, on that note, anything further? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Time to cut the cake.
Okay, Christina, motions.